So we have this bar thing on the wall that says, "The meeting ought to start in five seconds." Now we have a camera that says, "Anytime is just fine with them too." It calls me, the Osceulus City Councilor, and it is Monday, April 1st, 2019. We'll start with the invocation by Pastor Darren Bell, Gateway Christian Nazism.
Thank you, looks great together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your goodness, we thank you for your grace and mercy. Lord, we thank you for this great community and for the privilege of living here. Father, I thank you that you have established governments and ruling authorities. So I pray that you would bless these men and women tonight as they leave. I pray that you give them wisdom, discernment, pray that you give them guidance. I pray for unity in the meeting. And Lord, I pray that you would just bless their decisions for the sake of our community. I pray that you would make these decisions a blessing both physically and spiritually, even emotionally, for our community members. And may we just enjoy being together and be reminded of the blessing of living here. So we thank you, we love you, and we ask all of this from Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call please.
Burnett?
Here.
Calgery?
Here.
Josh?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Odison?
Here.
Welling?
Yes.
Yates?
Here.
Okay. The next item up is the opportunity for community comments. This item is reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're on the current agenda. Communities encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council. Ask to keep statements brief. Time limited, no more than three minutes. Any questions should be asked of the city staff, council members, or the mayor prior to speaking to the full council, so that way concerns can be properly researched and perhaps answered during the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council only. Is there anyone who would like to speak tonight? Yes, sir. Please come to the microphone. Damon Anderson.
My name is Steve Eaton. I live in the Five Harbor area. It was brought to my attention today about 3:30 this afternoon by Mr. Dross. My property was on the agenda tonight for being condemned over the city sewer field. I was not aware of this, that was on the agenda tonight, one thing. Second thing is, is back in November, December, when this all started, we went to the meeting at our extension office. Some of us, me and a couple of my neighbors had some concerns. The city guys came down, we talked about our concerns. At that time, they decided they were going to try to go a little bit north of us into Mr. Williamson's property. And that's where we left it. January 9th, I got an email from Sean Murphy stating that they couldn't resolve that Mr. Williamson, we gotta go back to Plan A, which is coming through our property. So I emailed him back on January 10th, saying, doesn't say anything about the laws of my trees and stuff like that. How do you want to proceed? Didn't hear anything told. Of course, part of March. He called me on like a Tuesday or Wednesday, called me, want me signed by Friday. I said, "We haven't agreed upon anything yet." And we got into a conversation, and I went through some numbers on my taxes and stuff like that. And I said, "Here's a number I would like to see." "Okay, I can approve that, I have to talk to somebody else." That's all I know. I've never heard a word back from him on anything. And told him, "Bob came to me today, said you're on the agenda tonight." It's like, why? And since I heard that unsuccessful negotiations. I was having a approach with him to counter off. So what do I do?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you'd like to deliver Mr. Eaton's concerns, certainly. If you appreciate them, sir. Number one, I have not visited with Mr. Eaton before tonight. We spoke here just a moment ago. I had heard from Sean earlier that he had visited with Mr. Eaton, that they'd had some conversations back and forth, that he had a number that he thought was excessive, and he understood what you were saying, and so far as how you were coming up with the number. He thought the number was excessive because of timeframes, determined to go ahead and bring this before the council, get authority. I would indicate to you though, Mr. Eaton, because I think sometimes there's some confusion with the language. All this is, is the preliminary first step. This is not like if the council decides something tonight, suddenly your property is condemned at all. Rather, this is the start of the process, and what happens with this, as I've indicated there, was apparent disagreement as to the number. The first step on something like this, after it gets approved, is the council has to hire someone to come out and formally appraise the ground and come up with a number for evaluation. When they do that, you of course have an opportunity to be there and have input in that whole thing too. Then, after that happens, then the city has to make an opportunity that cannot be less than that number. So I don't want you to believe in any event that what the council does tonight suddenly means they're going to be out there tomorrow with bulldozers tearing up your ground or anything like that. This is just a very early first step when it looked like something could not otherwise be resolved. And once again, there will be conversations afterwards too. Now, to the extent that there was not some additional conversation with you previously, that's unfortunate, I apologize, there probably should have been to work it out. Sometimes you get on problems with tight timeframes and so far as trying to proceed with the project, but once again, I don't want you to understand that if the council votes tonight to go ahead, that that automatically means it's going to happen, you know, because there will still be negotiations with you to try to get something in there.
I'd also make the point that both my neighbors still haven't heard back from Sean.
Yeah, I don't know where I can ever...
The thing that kind of bothers me the most is my property's on the agenda tonight, and I didn't hear about that until 3:30 today. I just got back from Texas yesterday. What if I wasn't here?
And all I can tell you with that is typically that's the way things are posted, you know, when the meeting is posted of a, or excuse me, notices posted in public hearing, the agenda items. But I understand some of what you're saying.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Steve, I'm Macalos. I live on our trees as well. I'm Steve's neighbor, and I was just here to confirm that I haven't heard anything back from Sean either. He told me he's going to come back and save. And he never showed up with any papers or anything. So I'm just confirming that for proceed, if that's happened to us as well.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak right now? Okay, we'll move on with the rest of the agenda.
Mayor, we need to go on the agenda when we're done with the wars, right?
That's correct. And I remind the council that you have the privilege to call the people in the audience if you want. Next is the consent agenda. Everything here is considered routine by the city council of being acted with one motion. The only one that I wanted to draw attention to is item I, where we have Esther Snodgrass considered for appointment to the Osceulus municipal housing business. You have a motion of support for the consent agenda. Any discussion?
I would like to make a request that item N be removed. I have a conflict of interest on that. We're involved in claiming the hotel. Have you had a statement on that?
Okay, that sounds good. So we'll, let's modify the motion so item M is removed, and then we'll vote on that separately. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Roll call on all items but number M.
Josh?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Odison?
Yes.
Welling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Calgery?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. And next is item M, that considers a resolution extending the site plan approval period for the development of the Fairfield Inn and Suites at the Gateway Commercial Park subdivision. Might as well have a motion. Okay. Second from Tom. Roll call, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Odison?
Yes.
Welling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Calgery?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
So that passes. Item six, this is the announcement of vacancies we have on various boards and committees. First is the airport commission. We've got a vacancy to fill upon appointment for a term ending December 31st of 2021. It's a five-member board that typically meets the first Monday of the month with four males and no females currently serving. We have the one vacancy. The board of adjustment, there's one vacancy to fill upon appointment for a term ending December 31st of 2020. It's a five-member board that meets as needed. Four males and no females currently serving, one vacancy. Building code board of appeals, we've got one vacancy for an ex officio member to serve at the pleasure of the mayor. It's a five-member board with two ex officio members that meets as needed. We have five males and one female currently serving. There's one vacancy for the ex officio. Historic preservation commission, there's one vacancy for an alternate member. It's a seven-member board with two alternate members that meets as needed. We have six males and two females currently serving with one vacancy for an alternate member. Next is the library board. There's one vacancy for accounting representative and two vacancies for city representatives for six-year terms that begin July 1st of 2019 and end on June 30th of 2025. It's a nine-member board that typically meets the fourth Monday of the month with four males and five females serving. Municipal housing agency, there's one vacancy to fill upon appointment for a term ending February 28th of 2021. It's a five-member board that meets quarterly with two males and two females currently serving, one vacancy. The planning and zoning commission, there's one vacancy to fill upon appointment for an unexpired term that ends on April 30th of 2020, and three vacancies for five-year terms that begin May 1st of 2019 and end on April 30th of 2024. It's a seven-member board that typically meets the second Tuesday, and it's about four males and two females currently serving, and of course, they have vacancies. Getting into the regular agenda, our first item is to consider a resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Phase III sanitary sewer system improvements project. Garden associates prepared the plans and specs for it. The project is the third phase of a plan of action that was submitted to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources in February of 2015 as a result of a notice of violation that was dated September 29th of 2014 in the Iowa DNR for bypassing raw wastewater from portions of the collection system and in wastewater treatment plants. Scope of the work for the project is a combination of multiple sewer projects. It includes the reconstruction of sanitary sewer pipes and the rehabilitation of sanitary sewer pipes and manholes at various locations throughout the city. This project is divided into two contracts. Contract one is primarily associated with sanitary sewer construction, Division One, and water main construction, Division Two. And contract two is primarily associated with sanitary sewer rehabilitation, Division Two. The overall base project includes 7,426 linear feet of sewer pipe reconstruction, 7,572 linear feet of sewer pipe lining, reconstruction or rehabilitation of 102 manholes, including 88 feet of line, and spot repairs of sanitary sewer main at 20 different locations. Preliminary engineering cost estimate for the base bid of these projects is $2,488,308 for contract one, and $1,217,880 for contract two, for a total preliminary estimate, $3,697,396. There'll be additional costs if contract alternatives are selected, and the estimated cost for Division Three, in the amount of $51,875, will be funded by the Osceulus Water Department. If the project's awarded, construction on contract one begins on or about October 1st of 2019 with a total of 195 working days for the base bid. And contract two would begin on or about April 29th of 2019 with 115 working days for the base bid. Additional working days would be allotted on each contract if contract alternatives are selected. So now's the time for interested persons to express their opinions concerning the project plans, specifications, the form of contract, and estimated cost on a $3,697,000 project. Would anyone care to speak? Seeing now, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion of support for the resolution approving the plan specs and form of contract and estimated cost? Okay, any discussion?
Just a quick question. So when we, I see one of the works is supposed to start in October, the other one's in April. Before we start to dig in, focus on general vicinity, if you will, do we have a conversation with them?
Yeah. Could you come to my phone?
Yes, it's the answer, but it's playing a little bit more.
I just know I have someone in my, it looks like it's going to be in my neighborhood, and I know there's someone concerned that I have a conversation with, and I'd just like to make sure that she has the opportunity to know what's going on before the fat hoe shows up in her front yard or something.
Yeah, once the projects are awarded, we have pre-construction conference, get a schedule from the contractors, when, where, and how they'll be working. And then once we do that, then city staff notifies those areas when we'll be in that area, and that's updated, we claim, try to give a two-week notice prior to starting construction.
So they contact individuals, it's not like it's a public posting that people are supposed to come to, they actually contact individuals?
Actually, through mail.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Are there any amendments I would like to add to the project or?
The, there's two divisions to work, but Division One, we're still trying to obtain a few amendments. Division Two, those have all been obtained, that's the rehab portion of work that we're doing, lining and male work then. Okay, that passes. Item B is to consider a resolution awarding the contract to Cornerstone Escavating Incorporated for Division One, Division Three of the Phase III sanitary sewer system improvements project. Phase III was advertised and bids were received, they were publicly read on March 13. The project was divided into two contracts where contract one is associated with sanitary sewer reconstruction, that's Division One, and the water main construction, Division Three. And contract two is associated with sanitary sewer rehabilitation, that's Division Two. So this item is for Division One and Division Three of the project. Now, only one bid was received for Division One and Division Three. It was from Cornerstone Escavating in the amount of $3,344,798.75 for the base bid. That makes it $864,490.75, namely just shy of 35 percent, higher than the engineer's estimate of $2,488,308. Engineering consultant for the project, garden and associates reviewed the bid and recommends that the city reject the bid and rebid the project at a future date. So I'll stop at this point. We have a motion supporting the rejection of the bid.
So who? I get it.
Okay, any discussion on that?
This will be a council member, Burnett's concern, your neighbor, wondering if you notified, because that would be Division One work. It's on this map here, it shows in purple.
Oh, that's correct.
And that would be Division One, so it would be rebid, and eventually it'll happen, but not as soon.
Okay. So can we point at anything in the engineering estimate versus what the, what the folks at Cornerstone came up with to say, you know, why it's so hot? One thing though, there's several things that I think, obviously we only had one bidder, and we didn't have a lot of interest in that portion of it. Part of it's, part of this is a large project, so smaller contractors weren't necessarily able to bid and get monitored for that work. A lot of large contractors were finding out through suppliers, or seeing Des Moines area because it's booming up there, it's easier to dig, they're an open field than it is to some of the work we've got here, we're doing existing utilities and buildings and those kind of things. So that's kind of where we're at. Our plan is to rebid the full, we'll probably split that project up so we can get some interest from the smaller people and try and get some bids. I know it's easy to say, in fact, the contractor told me, if it was smaller, I would bid, either here or there. But that's our plan for now. We'll probably length out the construction period, trying to get as much leeway and flexibility as we can to get it done and so on. And yeah, with one bid and set fire on this, I hope we're avoiding, obviously, so. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Other comments or questions? Okay. Motion is to reject the bid. Roll call, please.
Welling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Calgery?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Odison?
Yes.
Welling?
Yes.
Calgery?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Odison?
Yes.
Welling?
Yes.
Calgery?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Odison?
Yes.
Welling?
Yes.
Calgery?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Odison?
Yes.
Welling?
Yes.
Calgery?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Odison?
Yes.
Welling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion on that?
Well, it says revisit. Was it, well?
I don't...
I imagine we're going to be short because the costs are higher, right?
Right, that's part of the issue, right? So this, this construction line is essentially saying if we proceed with what you've just awarded previously. We still have work that needs to be done under the mandates in the plan of action that we submit to the DNR, saying that we're not going to have any more problems in our sewer system. And I say that here, of course. When I say that we're going to look at something in the future, I don't ever want to say the first thing we're going to do to free grades. It just, that's not, that shouldn't be the first thing that we suggest, grades are already high. So we need to look at what we already have planned for expenditures in future years, and perhaps we need to delay some of those things. Delaying collapsed sewer pipes, not fun. But those are the conversations that we have every year, is trying to figure out what can stay in, what can come out. That's what I'm suggesting we do first. I don't, I don't think we should just immediately say, "Yeah, we're going to go more in the money, we're going to raise rates."
Sure, we know we've got a man or two left, but we know we're in a lot more, yeah, a lot more, thank you.
Other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Burnett?
Yes.
Calgery?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Odison?
Yes.
Welling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Calgery?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Odison?
Yes.
Welling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Next item, E, is to consider a resolution approving amendment to the professional services agreement between the city of Osceulus and Calvin Burns and Associates for the North Seventeenth Street Bridge Replacement Project. The city council previously authorized that professional services agreement with Calvin Burns and Associates to provide the design, preliminary design phase engineering services for North Seventeenth Street Bridge Replacement Project. City was awarded bridge replacement funds, which will reimburse the city for 80 percent of the projected project and cost of $1 million, whichever is less. The proposed amendment is for the additional services associated with the final design services. It includes the design details and drafting of plans for construction of the new bridge, channel shaping, and approaching roadway and recreation trail reconstruction, and related service transition to this. The amendment also includes services related to the right-of-way and construction easement acquisitions, and submissions of construction documents to the city and Iowa DOT. Amendment number two would increase the contract by an additional amount of $66,950. There's a summary here in the agenda. Staff is recommending we approve the resolution. Do we have a motion to do so?
So, thank you.
Any discussion on that?
Well, I probably don't want one, too. My best problem is breaking it day one, and I know we're getting money from the government to do it, but I don't understand why, after we've been talking about this so long, it's changed with, on the design end.
Part of the issue is, you might recall, this is the longest-running bridge project I could do.
Yes, I agree.
You might recall, the bridge was discovered and founded in historic, and through that process, we had to submit to SHU, those state historic preservation offices. Systematically, the city's been drawing down funds from the total authorized amount of the eight point three million as projects are designed, bid out and constructed. Staff seeks prior approval from city council and SRF in the form of construction loan application. On April sixteen of twenty-eighteen, the city council authorized the first construction loan application under these SRF applications for a total amount of three million eight hundred twenty-two thousand dollars. And that's being used for Phase One and Phase Two of the Collection System Improvement Project. So tonight's item is a new construction loan application for a total amount of three million one hundred seventy-six thousand dollars. It will be used for Division Two of the Phase Three Collection System Improvement Project. Scope of the work including sewer main pipeline, seventeen thousand seventy-eight million feet, manhole rehabilitation and replacement, one hundred fifty-five manholes, and other work associated with sanitary sewer rehabilitation throughout the city of Oskaloosa. So approval of the item leaves an authorized balance of one million two hundred sixty-nine thousand six hundred dollars on the approved IUP. Given the increased construction costs for the work, staff and city council need to revisit the original IUP application and contemplate seeking additional funding using the SRF program or through a realignment of the sewers' utility existing capital improvement program. So do we have a motion supporting the resolution to authorize the construction loan application for inclusion in the Iowa Finance Authority State Revolving Plan?
Move.
Okay, any discussion on that?
Well, it says revisit. Was it, Lou?
I don't.
I imagine we're gonna be short because the costs are higher, right?
Right, that's part of the issue, right? So this, this construction loan is essentially saying if we proceed with what you've just awarded previously. We still have work that needs to be done under the mandates in the plan of action that we submit to the DNR saying that we're not gonna have any more problems in our sewer system. And I say that here, of course. When I say that we're gonna look at something in the future, I don't ever wanna say the first thing we're gonna do to free rates. It just, that's not, that shouldn't be the first thing that we suggest, rates are already high. So we need to look at what we already have planned for expenditures in future years. And perhaps we need to delay some of those things, delaying collapsed sewer pipes, not fun. But those are the conversations that we have every year, is trying to figure out what can stay in, what can come out. That's what I'm suggesting we do first. I don't, I don't think we should just immediately say, yeah, we're gonna go borrowing money, we're gonna raise rates.
Sure, know we got a man or two left, but we know we're in a lot more, yeah, a lot more, thank you.
Other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Burnett?
Yes.
Algeri?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Addison?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
That passes. Next item. It's a considered resolution approving amendment to the professional services agreement between the city of Oskaloosa and Calvin Burns and Associates for the North Seventeenth Street Bridge Replacement Project. The city council previously authorized that professional services agreement with Calvin Burns and Associates to provide the design, preliminary design phase engineering services for North Seventeenth Street Bridge Replacement Project. City was awarded bridge replacement funds which will reimburse the city for eighty percent of the project cost of one million dollars, whichever is less. The proposed amendment is for the additional services associated with the final design services. It includes the design details and drafting of plans for construction of the new bridge, channel shaping, and approaching roadway and recreation trail reconstruction, and related surface drainage. The amendment also includes services related to the right-of-way and construction easement acquisitions, and submissions of construction documents to the city and Iowa DOT. Amendment number two would increase the contract by an additional amount of sixty-six thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. There's a summary here in the agenda, staff is recommending we approve the resolution. Do we have a motion to do so?
So, same.
Any discussion on that?
Well, I probably don't want one too. I thought probably this bridge was day one, and I know we're getting money from the government to do it. But I don't understand why, after we've been talking about this so long, it's changed with, on the design end.
Part of the issue is, you might recall, this is the longest running bridge project.
Yes, I agree.
You might recall, the, the bridge was discovered and founded in historic. And through that process, we had to submit to Shippensburg State Historic Preservation Office. And the design team had to look at all the alternatives and figure out what could, could be done. The bridge has to be preserved, even if that means it's in a decaying state. And we have to realign where that new construction will occur. Our, our team's here, and Kilo should answer more, but essentially that's, that's the belief of what the amount is to.
So I love the road over.
So, yeah, the alignment will be moved on the, on the west side of the existing bridge. What you had previously, the contract was for preliminary design, was for the alignment for the NEPA clearance, for the Iowa DOT approval, for US Army Corps, all the divisions that approved this, we got approval for that. Now that we know the alignment, the, the final design phase will be the, doing the final construction plans for the new bridge.
So when the limestone bridge collapses and blocks that creek, this is absurd.
Naturally lapses.
We should have bought a couple tank cars and put over tubes in there and it'd be done. I'm just speaking out of turn.
They would have to be historic tank cars.
Well, we could find them.
Do you have a question though, Mike? So, so the, the amendments come to about a hundred and twenty percent of what the original agreement amount was. Will we see the same thing with the project?
So this is, so when, when we previously got, when we gave our contracts estimates to the DOT, we gave a harsh estimate for preliminary change, final design engineering. So this, this final phase of the design came in below the estimates that we previously provided to the DOT.
Good, good news.
Those are great results.
And then we won't talk about the condition of the road on each side of the bridge.
In, in all seriousness, again, I'm gonna be the positive guy here, spinning this another way. Clearly in the past, that, that bridge and that road was sealed up, and it was not in good shape. So anybody who was trying to utilize the recreation trail on, on any given day had to traverse it, dodge things, go slow. I mean, this will be a nice enhancement to that segment of the trail. It'll be safer, it'll be in good condition, concrete, so there's portion of it. So that'll be the positive thing. It's very expensive to do this project, not necessarily, but when the community constructed two wastewater facilities, this became essential.
So when this bridge is finished, will there be a historical marker there? Does that work with great for one, one time?
We're working through it, and Shippensburg, typically what I've seen is there will have to be some acknowledgement of historic structure. And you'll have that, we're trying to figure out, does there need to be a sidewalk to this thing? Maybe can we just put a plaque up nearby? It's crazy.
I mean, there's historical markers all throughout Iowa, which is a fence around.
Yeah, yeah, we wanna keep it long.
We all seen this bridge? No. Is it about your house? No, we used to go to the dog park where we moved the dog shelter, and pretty soon we're gonna move the wastewater plant, there's gonna be a pumping station there. It'd be like sidewalks nowhere, it's gonna be bridges nowhere, but I'm sorry, it's just, it's out of control, but I can't get it stopped. We, we can reach to the pumping station. Yes, we, I'm, so it's like that, actually, more, just a big waste of money. Yes, we will have to get to a pumping station. And it's not historical. I, I do all that. We can find the truth, they probably had material left over, or you say, hey, go out there, we need a bridge over that creek, and you know, this is.
Okay, any, any further comments? Opinions? Roll call, please.
Algeri?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Addison?
Yes.
Wally?
Forty-nine. Yes.
Gates?
Tom's an onion, yes.
Burnett?
Of course, yes.
Okay, that passes. Some more gracefully than others. Okay, next item. Is a motion authorizing city manager negotiated design services agreement for the Early Childhood Education and Recreation Center project. Representatives from the city, school district, and YMCA were recently charged with conducting a request for qualifications, it's an RFQ, processed with the purpose of recommending an architectural firm to design the Early Childhood Education and Recreation Center project. The committee is unanimously recommending that the city council pursue a contract with SVPA Architects as the most qualified and responsive firm for the project. As outlined in the attached document in our agenda, the team wrapped up the RFQ process on Tuesday, March twenty-sixth. Six proposals were narrowed down to three, and the final three firms were invited for interviews and requested to submit a fee proposal. The final three firms were RF, were FRK, RDG, and SVPA. The process generally included review of bridge materials and proposals, a review of past projects that included floor plans, project estimates, actuals, and exterior pictures, discussion with project references, in-person interviews with the project and design team, and also review of each firm's fee proposal. And so the action that's requested with this is for the city manager to negotiate a contract with SVPA Architects and prepare the necessary documents for city council consideration on April fifteen of twenty-nineteen. So do we have a motion supporting that?
Can we move?
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion on that?
Well, I guess just a couple comments from my side, you're part of the committee. First, I'd like to thank the school district in the Y, the team worked with us to move this project forward. It's a tremendous project for our community, and getting a vote yes on this step is one of the best things I've done since I've been on council, so I really enjoy this opportunity.
Other comments?
Mayor, council, just real quick, the next step, which I have on the screen here, reviews this outline to guide us in the process for the RFQ, and we're towards the bottom here, which is April first. We can award the project, basically give you the direction to proceed. Next two weeks, we put the contract hammer down, which in the financial section of the document, you'll see that the contract is for one million one hundred and ten thousand dollars. That represents six point seven nine percent of the total estimated construction cost of the project. This is a huge step, obviously, the approval of the contract will solidify that, but this is a huge step in this project's fruition and creation of it. Once we have the design team on board, they, they will be helping us get information out, talk about more, about what this project is for the community, and what it looks like, confirming the program, getting some of the schematic design done, and showing us what this thing will look like. It'll be up to all three entities to really push this, promote it, and the, the success of this is dependent upon the community's use of it. And that's the most important thing. We had really good firms that submitted in interviews, and we couldn't have gone wrong with any of the three firms that did submit. SVPA, did the Indianola facility and Milwaukee facility, they obviously have other projects under the belt. If you haven't taken time to go tour those, certainly recommend it, visit the Indianola facility like first, they, that's the most recent facility that they constructed. A little more modern compared to the Milwaukee facility. But again, this is a huge step in the right direction with this thing rolling pretty excited off it.
Got a motion in a second? Roll call, please.
Josh?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Addison?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Algeri?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Out of G, it's a considered resolution approving and directing the city attorney to initiate condemnation proceedings for a property located within the city of Oskaloosa. The city has completed the design of the sanitary sewer improvements for various locations throughout the city. The city has how, the city has however been unsuccessful in its efforts to negotiate by a good trade the acquisition of some of the necessary permanent and temporary easements from the owners of the property. And the one in question tonight is the one located eleven oh five arbitrage, owned by Stephen and Kendra Heaton, as we found earlier. As a result of the unsuccessful negotiation for acquisition, city must enter the condemnation process in order to continue the necessary sanitary sewer improvement project. This item sets forth the city council's direction to staff on the matter, and if approved, will formally initiate the condemnation proceedings with the property owners. To get the conversation started, do we have a motion of support for this?
So, yes.
Okay, so we got a motion in a second. Okay, so, so Dave, is there anything else you would wanna to say at this point about the process and what this voting really does?
Yeah, I, I spoke to it before, explaining a little bit about what I understand as far as how we got to this point. Obviously, from what Mr. Heaton has indicated tonight, it certainly sounds like there's a willingness on his part to continue to try to visit the city of Ohio. As I indicated, I'd understood from Sean, it sounded like the, the city and the Heaton's were too far apart insofar as the number and how the number was being computed. To that extent, quite frankly, the condemnation is not a bad thing, to the extent that you get somebody out there with specific knowledge and expertise as an appraiser to really say, okay, what is this easement across the ground worth? As I indicated to Mr. Heaton, as we were talking earlier, in that process, of course, he can be there when the appraiser's out there. Then, obviously, the city can't offer a number lower than that. So quite frankly, it's, in my mind, helpful having a third party with some expertise really indicate to the parties, you know, their professional opinion on the thing. As I indicated, this does not mean people are gonna be out there tomorrow tearing up the ground or anything, and obviously it can still be unafforded. This is just kind of the first step in the process. The, the problem, of course, with these, as we indicated before, is that as you can see, the city's got an aggressive agenda with a lot of things going on, and you get into tight timeframes. And if you have a problem, obviously, you can delay the whole project. So that's, in a nutshell, that's kind of where we're at, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has about that.
What about the neighbors? They aren't, he said he hasn't been contacted, but is he not, isn't his, needed?
Yeah, we have that easement, two months.
No, we don't have that. There, there are some sections here that have not been acquired, and again, they're gonna be in various states of negotiation. We don't, we haven't taken an approach where we do a blanket public notice, which I talked to a couple of council members about. These projects, we have some options going forward, perhaps we just have a public hearing upfront, list all the property owners that are affected. Well, by hearing that, at least we'll give the authority to the staff and city attorney to proceed with condemnation in the event that negotiations break down. Right now, we don't do it that way, we work with each individual, because obviously, it, it saves us, the neighbors, money to try to work with property owners and not go through the legal process. In theory, there should be a way to resolve this so that everybody comes out fairly even. There are a number of property owners that don't require compensation. They understand that this is an improvement to the utility, and they want their, they want the neighbors to let's the flush, and there's no competition.
That was mine.
There are others that, there are others that wanna be compensated because it changes, it alters their, their landscape, or it alters what they originally purchased the property for. I mean, we get that, so there should be some form of compensation, that's why we try to use a set rate. And we, as a group, have agreed on past instances to use condemnation in the event that we can't come to a resolution because the projects have to be moved forward, or we have to abandon those projects. We recently did that. Didn't come to a conclusion, property owner didn't want to provide easement, we took that down. And so that area won't be improved, and they could have, they could have issues, and that was a private area, if you remember correctly. But we obviously wanna try to get through these things and, and we have a duty on staff to make sure that the communication is, is done to where that everybody, you know, is in the loop and meets our expectations. So that'll be something I follow up on with our staff, but in this particular instance, I left this map on the screen because this is Division One work. And so, this is part of the stuff that was rejected, we're gonna have to rebid, so there is some additional time. Getting the authorization to proceed with condemnation, I don't think is a bad thing upfront, I think we should do it earlier. That way, we can work through things and get it done if we need. Sean, I would say, and probably of course, they were trying to hustle up to get somebody done sooner because we thought you're gonna be doing this work if the bids didn't come back. How can we be doing that, that work as early as spring, so?
I have a couple of questions. What, it mentions that there are some permanent and temporary easements, would these be for temporary, with your location, do you know?
If, if I'm understanding, Diane, if you look at the sketch you've got of your materials, I think it indicates, perhaps not, I don't have the actual.
I think, I'm sorry, I think it's gone both permanent and, and.
In that, in that same property? And my other question then too was also just about the neighbors then, if, if there are others, why did this one in particular come before us tonight? And I would feel more comfortable with, let's try to do some negotiation, and especially, we have some extra time now since we are rejecting that they're gonna have to rebid it. Can we not, you know, really try to get some negotiation going in the next couple of weeks and then bring this back to the council?
Yeah, and that's not the issue, again, negotiation will require part of the condemnation proceeds anyway. But we, our staff spends quite a bit of time, and we should probably do a better job of reporting how much time you spend on easement equity process. It's substantial, because it, it, there are a number of property owners that are affected, and we don't wanna end up in, in court, basically, through the condemnation proceeding process. So I know they, they tried, we have checklist for that. I don't know how it met this number, because it sound like everybody is on the same page, so we'll follow up on that. And there are instances where we, we see an indication that they would be good with it, and then things change. People, we talk to other people, they don't like the number, or now they think they should be compensated, whatever, maybe you're busy, maybe you're just calling, call back. So there could be things that we could do better and change it in the process. And I definitely think there will be additional discussions that these property owners want.
Diane, two points if you'd like to add to that. Number one, you asked about other property owners. I don't specifically know the answer to that Sean initially tries to approach and then turns things over to me if they're having difficulty with one, so. I don't know to answer your question or the neighbor whose name, I apologize, I forget. I, I can't, I don't know the specific answer to that, number one. Number two, kind of to echo what Mike had to say, condemnation, quite frankly, is not a good way to go.
It's a bad word.
Well, it is a bad word, number one, but number two, it's also expensive for the city. Because typically, when you come in, you know, we did this before with a couple of properties a couple of years ago. You have to hire an appraiser, first of all, which is not cheap. Have to pay him for the appraiser, the appraisal, then he testifies at the hearing, have to pay him for that. We've got to get orders from the chief judge, pointing that sheriff jury members for it. We've got to pay them for their time. Then very often, if we're just talking an underground leanyes, the dollars awarded, quite frankly, are usually not great, but you end up spending a lot of money going through the process. So obviously, if you can avoid it, that certainly would be ideal for everybody.
Well, I'm gonna put words in Diane's mouth, but I think I hear what she's saying, I think she's thinking what I'm thinking. Steve and Kendra showed up here tonight, obviously, they're probably buying eight ball hair a little bit, and I'm pretty sure Steve knows we need to flush. But if, he sounds like he's willing, and like, you made a great speech, we don't need to pay the attorneys anymore and have any more costs. So I'd say we give it one more shot to see if Sean and Steve and Kendra can come to agreement, yes, Steve?
Can I?
Sure.
Okay. I wanna touch on a few things that both you said, I've got the actual easement. Same thing Sean sent me here, and, and it's two thousand three hundred and eighty-three square foot of permanent easement. Two thousand one hundred and sixty-nine foot of temporary. That, that's.
It's gotta be permanent, the pipe's in the ground.
Right. You know, we've got. The other thing, the other thing to this is, there's no value, there's no value, dollar amount listed on here. They're wanting me to sign it and give it. There's no dollar amount here. I don't know, we're coming up to the values all of a sudden.
And Steve, with that, if you were to, if you got the thing, now that probably has the garden associate that will show that to Diane. Because typically, that will show in the sketch where the permanent areas and where the temporary easement.
It is basically a twenty-foot permanent and a forty-foot temporary.
They've got this urge, Steve, I'm kind of, I thought you said they'd made an offer, you didn't like it, and you were waiting to count.
He offered me three, three trees per, one tree for every thirty foot, to replace all the trees that I'm losing. And I said, no, that's unacceptable, being here is my number.
So the value of it was buying trees.
And if, and the third, third part of this is, if you're wanting to know the value of our ground, just got this in the mail today. It tells me that what it's assessed at now, that it's going up.
Yeah, mine went wad.
So, you don't have to pay your, whoever it tells right here, I just got it today, from. So, there is... You don't have to pay your... Whoever it does right here, I just got it today from...
Well...
Thank you. Our initial... Our initial decision comes to act as an easement for the sewer utility. Because sewer customers would pay for that zero. That's always our request is that, hey, we're all in this together. So, we're asking you to essentially give the easement to the city, the rest of our repair, and everybody else.
So, the initial paperwork wouldn't have a dollar value?
That is correct. That's the way we always correct those initially chosen dollars.
It's a price of the tree.
Now, if some... Well, initially, that was... Initially, it shows zero dollars. Then, if somebody gets something, you know, tons, it's, well, yeah, I'll do that. Might be 500 bucks, whoever. Then, if the city's gribbled and we redraft that fucking dollar number. But initially, as Mike has indicated, all the drafts don't show any dollar number on those.
Well, I'm not taking sides. And I understand the process. I'm just saying, since they showed up, if we can re-talk one more time, it might be a good thing.
My biggest disappointment in this, in talking to Steve, is that Sean and Steve exchanged emails in January. And then, apparently, it was 60 days later before there's next contact and it's a phone call and we need to get this taken care of. If we're trying to get things taken care of in short order to meet project timeframes, why did we wait 60 days? And then, why was it so urgent? I think the other thing is negotiations are two ways. So, I mean, if you're asking what I think my property's worth, I can tell you, you don't have to like it. But if you say you're going back to get an answer to see what you can do, come back and tell me. Don't have the next step be my councilman tells me that your property's on the agenda to be condemned for the easement. So, I don't think there's been... I agree with Tom. I don't think there's been enough true negotiation that's happened. I think Steve's willing to talk, you know. I just seem not paid, Dave. Appraisers and sites, if we don't have to. I mean, I think it is a case where we need to have some true negotiation and conversation.
And Steve, you got to remember, we do have to flush.
To that note, though, I mean, I truly do understand that, but this does not affect my flushing. This is everybody... I mean, something totally different.
But Mr. DeVos?
Yep.
Could I ask a question? Were you contacting the same timeframe as far as the January timeframe?
Yeah, yep. Yeah, pretty much all this... Because Steve and I talk, we're neighbors. And, you know, he'd updated the city.
Maybe for everybody else.
Yep.
And what is your address?
1103 Harbor Hills. Yep. It just goes through a small portion in the back there. But those are trees that have a private fence line between the neighborhood back there. And they're all mature trees. So, I mean, you take a 40-foot path through there for a temporary easement, you're going to kill a lot of the trees back there. So, that's kind of upset a lot of us on that, you know. And then, but yeah, as far as the timeframe, he's contacted Steve about the same time as he contacted me. But then, same thing, I know Stephen said that, you know, he gave him a number and talked to him. And then, he had called me and said, well, I want to come over a while and sign the paper. I got to hurry up and...
And this was in March as well? So, with the January to March timeframe?
Yep.
Okay.
He said, we're running short on time. I got to hurry up and get this signed. We need to sign it. And I said, well, we haven't really negotiated anything or talked about anything. He just wanted me to sign it.
So, you never provided any counteroffer or anything yet for him to judge?
No, I just mentioned to him, you know, if you're going to... I mentioned my concern about killing all the trees back there. That I want something done with the property that's going to replace trees at the minimum.
I'm just trying to understand the difference of words. So, you didn't ever give a number?
Yeah, I never gave a number.
Thank you.
Yep.
I think the other thing, as I think about seeing you as a councilperson, I'm being asked to initiate condemnation proceedings against somebody's property. But I don't have record of the conversation or the negotiation that has happened. I think that, having that for future... Future items would serve my own. All I have is one side of the story.
And backing up for a moment, if I could, to just the issue of the food business. Once again, I'm not going to party to direct conversations with Mr. Heaton saying as far as the one tree or three trees and such. Historically, as I've understood it, the city, if the city takes out trees or vegetation, they replace that. They're responsible for that. That's part of our standard language on the easements. Now, that's my understanding of the general policy. I don't know if there's some difference. I mean, you could have scrubbed brush as opposed to, you know, some more attractive, better standing streets. I don't know. But I've always understood that generally, the city's policies.
Okay. So, that would be part of the sewer project? That even though we're saying we're replacing pipes and we're... Or lining, whatever. You know, there is landscaping that takes place as a part of that project.
Right. My understanding has always been the city's position traditionally has been, you know, we go through, we're taking out trees and we replace trees. Now, once again, you mentioned one tree versus three. I know that wasn't part of the conversation, but just that's been my understanding historically with the city's approach.
Yeah, there's going to be several trees that are to be taken out.
Or a garage.
No, or a wall there.
Oh, I agree.
So, Janie, if it's a permanent sewer, we don't put trees back because the trees could damage the sewers?
I agree with you.
So, what's our option here, Mayor? Table, move, voted down?
We have a motion on the table to initiate condemnation proceedings. The proceedings are only an enablement that takes place, that the city manager can use. It's for a project that we have just voted down in the sense that it's on a much slower timetable than it was before. But we're also assured that if we do enable the city manager to go through the condemnation process, that doesn't really change anything in the sense that it's still to our advantage to negotiate away from that. But it's just, it would act as kind of a reminder, hey, you know, we've got this in the back pocket. So, if I was sitting in the county's chairs back in the days when I did, that's what I would be weighing in my mind is, you know, does it hurt anything to go ahead and vote this thing forward? Because from the sound of it, it sounds like the negotiation could take place.
Can I ask a question as you're explaining that? If we vote no, then tonight, because we want more time or whatever, so we just vote no, then does that then prevent us from ever doing it in the future if we have to?
No. No, obviously, what would happen then would be Sean would get back in touch, trying again, see if he can get something worked out. If so, terrific, the problem solved, the draft easement gets revised and gets signed. If not, then once again, a motion looking much like this one comes back, comes back.
But it can come back to us if...
If one of the people supporting it would be the one to do that, so follow the process and bring the idea back to the table?
I don't want to vote no, but can we just table it?
That's what I was trying to get to, what our option is.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say because what I'm saying is, okay, why should they have the pressure of already have condemnation declared on them and we haven't dealt with these other people? Let's either do them all at once. And if we were doing them all at once, I'd probably go ahead and do them. Let's have it. Gives the tool the shed to do what we need to do. But it's a little... It's a little odd.
Now, if we table, by definition, something that's tabled gets brought up at the next meeting. And then, if it gets tabled again to the next meeting, that sort of thing. So, you know, would two weeks be enough time to work with Sean?
No, I wouldn't. I wouldn't put that type of a timeframe on this, Mayor.
How about a morning?
I would say at least 30 days. And then, we can always check back in if it's ready to go, great, it's been evolved, even better. But I would at least say 30 days. Again, this project will be redesigned and rebid so that the work gets started as early as fall. The condemnation process still does take months. And that's part of the issue we ran to in the first phase of this project.
But just because we have... I'm sorry, because we have to... I don't want to slow it down that much, Mike. That's not what I'm saying.
Yeah, 30 days, I think it's...
So, we know we need to go ahead and get this cleared because it will happen, so.
And the council, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, if we don't... If it doesn't get negotiated in the next 30 days, what's the chance that it's going to get negotiated in 60 days without going to formal proceedings?
I was just going to add, the council is here for that ground on the north where it crosses the lot line there. That crosses up and right through there. That crosses through Nick Williams' property. The council is here for a group to agree to a condemnation there because we're just not able to get a response back from Nick or from his daughter. And so, we have hired appraisal or an appraiser on that. That's kind of in the process. But I just mentioned that so you know where you're at on the rest of this.
So, for Steve's benefit, this gives condemned. Everybody negotiates and we're still far away. Then what happens?
And I'm sorry, you mean if we vote, go ahead tonight?
Whenever. Let's say that someday it's condemned because we can't come to an agreement and the negotiator can't come to some number that they won't agree to. We condemn it just for his benefit. Where does this go?
What happens then? I file an application with the chief justice of... Or chief judge in our local judicial district. He orders an order appointing sheriff's jury members for the condemnation proceedings from a list that the county auditor maintains. I want to say there's six people on that. You appoint the originals and then the small trends and stuff like that. We work with the sheriff's office. They set a hearing on the thing. We have the hearing. Testimonies presented from the appraiser at that time. Certainly, Mr. Heaton has an opportunity to get that hearing, too. The evidence is presented and the sheriff's jury members say we assess damages at the amount of X dollars. If the amount, I'm working from memory here, but if the amount, as I recall, if it's more than 10% above our last bid, then the city is also ordered to pay Mr. Heaton's attorney's fees if he has an attorney with them. And then, basically, we proceed from there.
But again, that process is not to determine whether or not it can or cannot happen because the judge would give an order to say that the property has been condemned. And the city is outlined because it's for a public purpose. It's all about compensation.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. It's going to happen. It is... I just was wondering, who's to eventually determine how much?
Yeah, the sheriff's jury, those commissioners. And the panel with that, they have a list. Two of them, as I recall, are supposed to be realtors or people with knowledge of real estate values. And I forget the other categories without having that in front of me. But there's a listing of the categories that those commission members have selected from.
So, we have a motion in a second for initiating condemnation. Do we... Amy knows we've made them, I'm sure.
Gates?
Oh.
Josh?
I would change my motion to table for 30 days to see if we can come with some resolution to negotiation.
So, the motion, as it stands on the floor, is one for table in 30 days. Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Callinger?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Okay. That passes. Last item, the formal agenda. Agenda is the discussion of possible action regarding the Oskaloosa Spring Cleanup Program. Item is reserved to provide the city council with a review of past activity related to the spring cleanup program that was conducted by the Oskaloosa Public Works Department. And so, there's a grid of data on the second page of this. City management has recommended discontinuance of the program. Several reasons for the recommendation approved, but it's not limited to the following. First bullet point, prolonged wear conditions have led to a significant backlog of work order requests. Bullet point two, potholes, potholes, and more potholes. Enjoy the style. Number three is the soft roads under chick seal would be damaged by our own equipment doing moving movements and doing the loading. Interesting idea that we would be tearing up our own streets and then having to go back and fix them. Fourth, reports from staff indicate the same homes tend to use the program over and over. Number five, the program encourages some residents to hold onto items until the annual pickup occurs rather than disposing of them in a timely manner. Number six is the local haulers can accommodate most of the items picked up by city staff with special arrangements or notification. And number seven, the residents can haul items themselves or make arrangements for items to be hauled to the Mahaska County landfill, conveniently located just five miles from the center of town.
I like that, right.
And finally, and last but not least, I suppose, Mahaska County has canceled their cleanup program for this year as well. So, anyway, I guess to get the conversation, do we have a motion to discontinue the spring cleanup program?
Okay.
Any discussion?
Well, I think we're a hair late, but I'm for it. There's already piles around town, a lot in the last three days, but...
I did have a phone call from a resident who wanted to be doing it again this year and cancel next year because they always bailed themselves of it. But like Tom said, there's already people putting stuff on the curbs planning on it because, considering...
But I know what he was saying.
Considering all these reasons, I'm with Tom. I'm really for it.
Oh, I'm... Yeah, I'm for getting rid of it now.
Get rid of the program now?
Yes.
Yeah. But the people who haul the stuff out onto the curbs can...
Well, they're going to have to.
Or in fact, it's conveniently close that they can put on a pickup or whatever and get it out.
Or get their local hauler to...
Yeah.
I think it would be surprising to most people, the cost of operating this, and we're talking $13,000, $14,000, taking every available staff person, every piece of equipment that the city owns out there to do this instead of getting to the streets or the nothings.
Senator Council, I think this is a pretty strong operational item. And normally, I don't bring too many operational items to you, but the idea is policy's at board. But given the community's ask with this program, I thought it would be wise to make sure that we're all on this page. But I do think the data speaks for itself. We do spend a tremendous amount of time doing this over and over again. And there are, again, other ways for people to avail themselves of their property, pieces of equipment that they could break down as well so it can fit in their container. I think one of the things that didn't get included here is we could be done at least two people now within our street department. So, you only have a staff of essentially seven, so a half that work on roads. We're in a tough position. And I don't like to use having staff shortages as an excuse, but that won't help us.
And the roads, and we all know it. We're all going through this. The road base in town and in the county is so soft. The county's having trouble going out and fixing their roads. The ones they're trying to fix are getting worse. It's just, walking in your yard is mushy and it's going to be a while for you to drive it out because this is a fatal.
And that's why Burlington Road within city limits, the west side of Highway 23, is closed. It is just too soft. And right now, it's cordially inconvenient because that road's closed as well as 900 E.
And that's a silco road.
But Burlington is a silco road.
All the silco roads we have, so...
Other comments?
If the potholes are going to get fixed, I would be happy to keep my junk in my basement. Or take it to Joe's house.
Take it to Joe's.
Charge a small fee. So, that one here is... But I think that is a... I think that's a key to it is that, I mean, potholes are a problem. And I think that it would be widely accepted if we get this potholes fixed.
And then clarify, this is going forward. This is my operational recommendation before that we don't revisit this. And if we do, it's probably a current that council wants to bid it out instead.
And I think it would pay us, anyone who does call in question, to let people know how much this costs, the city area. I think people have no idea.
I'm guessing the people that are using it probably don't care. So, I mean, the fact of the matter is...
Well, I use it every year, Steve.
And while the time I take that back, you care. But most people that are using it probably think it's their God-given right if we pick up their trash worms. So, I think that it's probably overdue. And I think they've got their own garbage haulers that can pick up the trash. And those that have put it on the car, saw it Sunday the other day and I'm thinking, boy, they've jumped again, knowing that we were going to talk about this tonight. So, shame on them for sticking it out on the curb. I just... My first impression of Oskaloosa when I came back to town five years ago was this program. My wife and I came to town and looked at houses this weekend. And this stuff was everywhere all over the... I just remember that five years ago. And the stuff was all over the curbs. And we asked, Lori Oaks was our realtor. And we just said, so what's going on with all the garbage on the curbs, you know? And that's just... It just happened to be coincidental that we moved to town that weekend. Or we didn't move to town, we lived for houses that weekend. She couldn't apologize enough about the way it looks. So, it's just not a good look.
Other comments? Other comments? Roll call, please.
Otten?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Kelliger?
Yes.
Jost?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Gets us to the end of the agenda. Comments from city staff, city manager?
Mayor Council, including your packages, a memo from Public Works Director regarding on-street park search and for South Eighth Street, member of the gentleman came in, made the request. Staff has done their analysis of it, and collectively, we would recommend that no changes be made at this time.
Anything else? City clerk, anything?
Hopefully, everybody found the budget book for this one year, 2020. Just another, that can all be sold in town on the city's website, hopefully.
Doorstop. Not working, thank you.
That's beautifully done.
Thank you.
Nicely ordered. City attorney, you've been quiet all night.
You've probably heard plenty from the owner.
Okay, thank you. Steve?
No, sir.
Tom?
No, Chad's not here, and I don't think it's a few.
Chad is.
All I need is a, and I understand where we're at, but at the intersection of A and Love, just an answer, some kind of answer where it's on the schedule to at least get it smoothed out and get the barricades gone, it's really a traffic. I mean, I, you know, the answer is, and I can tell everybody, don't go that way. But, so if you're, I'm not saying fix it, I'm just saying, when can we fix it?
We're working on it.
You let me know.
Yeah.
And I get a call, then I'll have it something to tell them, okay? I've had a couple.